Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At 5:31 on today, November 7th, 2019, I will call this meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education to order. Thank you all for being here tonight. Two items on tonight's agenda. First, 151-0295, EA/RR, Phase 2 of 5. For discussion on that, I'll begin with Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and congratulations to you, as well as Fisher Pagano, and Fisher Sweeney, and Fisher Brown, President Brown, and your elections.
Thank you.
Good to have you back. We are, two quick things tonight, hopefully. We are back before you, and I'm joined with our colleagues from Newfield and Friar, our architects, for Phase 2, Plan Review, essentially, and approval of this school construction project. So I think you should have copies of the PowerPoint, but I just got a quick deck here to run through real quick as to what Phase 2 is. So, the, this, this project, as you know, is through this state of Connecticut, it's Department of the Ministry of Services, we have to follow their playbook, and they break it up into phases. This is the phase which is steel and concrete, so it's a real sort of frame of the building and so forth. Earlier today, Newfield and the architects, as well as Chris Harmon from our department and others, met with Gil from planning and zoning and went through things, Bill Quinn, the Fire Marshal's office, and so forth. So all the plans have been locally reviewed and signed off on, and so technically, we need your approval as well, so we're bringing this to you tonight. So just quickly run it through the deck, Carrie, if you could jump to slide 2, what the site looks like. Let me just be, arrow key on that. Oh, sorry. I'm going to skip over the, yeah, so there's the, the site, as you recall, from previously, that the loop really is that driveway that currently comes up. So the way the site is being configured now, that loop will be expanded a little bit to accommodate the buses that we anticipate. On the left, as you're coming up, which is currently the driveway, really, we're expanding, and that'll be the pre-K side, as you come always straight up, the administrative offices, and so that elementary section will be straight ahead up the driveway. Then you'll have the gym and the cafeteria, slightly to the right of the loop, and then the, the bigger grade, science rooms, and so forth, up at the top, kind of where the gym currently is. There'll be some green space up there as well, a small. Next slide, Carrie, this is a 677-student school, about 700 kids, pre-K through 8. There'll be three classes per grade, increasing from 44,000 to 86,000 square feet. Those of you involved in the Carrington Project, a lot of the aesthetics will be the same as Carrington, in a lot of the design and so forth, as Friar worked on that with us, and many of the aspects of that were something that we liked. The main entrance vestibular area will be secured and consistent with our new school of security plans, with the technology as well. Could jump to the next slide. So this is Phase 2, this is site, concrete, and steel, and essentially, that's what you're approving, and could jump to the next slide. And what that means essentially is, the, the technical plans of, of the clearing of the site, what the concrete laying will be, where the steel will go, and so forth, that's what was looked at earlier today by, by Gil and the Health Department, and the Fire Marshal, et cetera. During this phase, the site will be cleared, leaving a tree line surrounding the school, providing a visual barrier for the neighborhood homes from the school. Utilities, including stormwater collection, domestic water, electroconduit, will be installed. The bus loop essentially is remaining, but we're going to adjust that slightly for the center firelight, similar to the Carrington model as well, for better access for emergency vehicles in the case that's needed. New retaining walls that will be part of this phase will allow for a two-tiered parking lot, for about 80 parking spaces, as I noted, that nearly doubles the amount of parking, obviously, with the added student capacity. We'll have some added staff capacity, but want to accommodate for visitors and other staff as well. Additional retaining walls will create two new playground areas adjacent to the building, and those will be, as you're coming up the driveway, there'll be playgrounds on your left, right, so the pre-K can walk right outside, on grade level to those. The additional retaining walls, I'm sorry, those are the playgrounds, accessible plazas and sidewalks with concrete bollards will provide safe drop-off zones for the parents and protecting the building, and then the concrete foundations will be poured, and structural steel frame will be erected for the additions during the phase. The importance of this phase as well, sometimes this is in its own phase, sometimes it's rolled into the construction phase. By doing this now, we really feel like we can accelerate the timetable, get the steel in production now, and as we get to the construction phase, that'll go much quicker. So if there's any questions, I've got Tom Demoro from Newfield is here, and Alisa Roselli from Friar, and, and myself.
Any questions? Fisher Pagano.
Thank you, Chairperson. It's hard to see on this rendering, but I'm assuming that the, the inclination up the driveway, is that at the same attack angle, or have we leveled it out a little bit?
It'll be leveled out a bit, and so they'll be moving some.
So it'll be a little easier to get up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That was the only thing.
Actually, the way that gets leveled out, and the way they've revised the designs, we actually will be probably doing a little bit less of retaining wall than we thought initially.
Okay.
Because of the flattening out, so that is the plan.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Questions from the commissioners?
Looks good.
All right. Seeing none. Kathy, I know you're late, if you want, did you have any questions?
Nope.
All right, I like it. That being said, I'd look for a motion to approve moving this to our special meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll be addressing this again in about 10 minutes.
Great.
Item number 2.
Yes, thank you. The second item is an agreement between Waterbury Development Corp. and Fussin' O'Neill. These are environmental consultants who we've worked with on this project already, to do a lot of the testing and so forth. What this contract is for is for project oversight for the project. Now, for expediency, and because WDC is working with us essentially as a program manager support, they've already approved this agreement, but for purposes of the way DAS works in school construction contracts, we want to bring it to the Building Committee as well, to get your approval, and ultimately, the board's approval as well, so we have the record that we brought it through the, the groups here. WDC was able to get this in place quicker than the cycle that would run through the, the city process, but Linda Whibley and her office were involved in the contract negotiation, and putting that together, working with WDC, and again, they're a quasi-agency of the city that is contracted with, so we're confident that that covers that side of the ledger. But for technical purposes, with the audit and the school construction, the way the rules work of DAS, we want to make sure this committee sees it and understands, and it goes and gets approved by the board as well, so we'll have those minutes in the record. But essentially, what this contract is, is basically that they will be the environmental folks who will oversee this phase and, and the future phases of the construction, to make sure that the environmental pieces of the abatement, the demolition, and when they're moving the dirt around and so forth, is all done to standard. They are working with the various environmental agencies to make sure we're filing all the appropriate reports, make sure that Newfield's doing what they're supposed to do, and so forth, so essentially, they serve as an agent of ours to make sure that all the environmental regulations are followed and everything is done. Thankfully, some of the additional testing that was done proved good, in the sense that we didn't see as much leaching as, as we might have feared, as far as some of the PCBs and so forth, so we should be able to reclaim and reuse a bunch of the soil and rock and things like that. That's something that Newfield and the abatement contractors will be working on now, but they will be doing testing along the way to make sure that, that it's all consistent with governing regulations and laws.
Questions on this agenda? The only question I had, Will, how does, how does this agreement in Fussin' O'Neill work with our commissioning agent? Is there overlap? Because it seems like they're both there to make sure that we're protected and doing the right things. Is this because it's strictly just the environmental portion of it, or how did, how would those work together?
Yeah, it, it, it works together in the sense of the team, and they're both sort of agents of ours. This is hyper-focused on the environmental specifics, whereas Van Zelm, the commissioning agent, is basically making sure we're following all the plans that are developed and approved through these committees, as far as the construction and what's supposed to be, to Commissioner Vanstone's questions, in prior meetings, specific things were designed and expected in the building. Van Zelm's making sure that that thing went in the building, and doing those things. So they'll be working in, in conjunction with Fussin' O'Neill, just to make sure the process is moving along and things that were promised, and part of the design is there, but this is really hyper-focused on the technical natures, the testing of the soil, what they bring out in the abatement, making sure that they're following the, the code and the rules and so forth.
Terrific. Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to remove, move this professional service agreement to our special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we'll also have that on tonight's special meeting. With nothing else further on the agenda, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education at State Street School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Commissioner Juanita, would you lead us in the pledge?
If I know where the flag is, where's the flag?
Oh, okay. Regent's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Commissioner Juan?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Pagano?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Danstone?
Present.
Commissioner Todd Danstone?
Present.
President Karan?
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 1.1. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on the Building and School Facilities recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve a request for review of final plan Form SCG-042, Phase 2 of 5, for the Wendell Cross Elementary School Project, which is State Project 151-0295-EARRR. Respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion carries, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 1.2. Ladies and gentlemen, with the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve a professional services agreement with the Waterbury Development Corporation and Fussin' O'Neill Enviroscience LLC for environmental construction administration and project oversight services for the Wendell L. Cross School Renovation and Construction Project, State Project 151-0295-EARRR. Respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion? Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain?
Abstaining.
Want, want abstention? Motion carries, thank you. Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, that's okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at State Street School this evening. We'll begin our, our meeting with a silent prayer. I would ask our student advisor from Willby High School, Supreme Munkel, to lead us in the pledge.
I am the vice president's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome, Supreme.
Okay, first on the agenda, I'd like to welcome our wonderful principal, Lisa Areola. Simone's.
Welcome, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, and my staff and families. Thank you for joining us tonight. So as you know, our mission here at the State Street Program encompasses our collaboration with families and the community, our efforts to prepare students for our changes in the global society, and we take pride in our stable and nurturing environment. Through the time here at the program, we really operate as one big family. Our vision is aligned to the district portrait of a graduate, as our vision adequately prepares our students for lifelong learners. In 2001, when I joined the State Street family, we were here at the 35 State Street Address. We occupied the back portion of this building, and with two portables out in the back. The enrollment at that time was approximately 60 students. In 2009, we relocated during the renovations here, and remained on the Greg Street Address for approximately nine years. We outgrew that facility and returned here in 2018. With our new facility here, we were able to service more students in a more appropriate therapeutic setting. We now have a full, separate wing for our elementary program, which includes our TLC classroom, which is our preschool and kindergarten students. We've got a great opportunity to blend and work with our Office of Early Childhood and the staff there, and our elementary programs offer a full sensory room, incentive rooms. We have a school store, a library and media center. We have two opportunity areas and breakout rooms. We have a small conference room in the back for our students and staff. We also offer a full-time, two full-time social workers and a part-time psychologist back there. Our middle school and high school programs here have expanded as well. We now are able to offer our complete science lab, where we've moved a special education teacher into. We've got our full gym and fitness center. We have two computer labs, where some of our students have the opportunity to access Ingenuity in our Virtual Academy program for credit retrieval purposes, and we also have our art room with, which has access to the kiln. We have an opportunity area for those students in our life skills room, and our hope is eventually to staff both our tech ed shop and our, our life skills room for students to access more regularly. So currently, our population had gone from those two elementary classrooms, and two middle school classrooms, and three high school classrooms, to six elementary classrooms that are almost full at this point, three middle school classrooms, and six high school classrooms. So from 2012 to currently, you'll see our enrollment has drastically increased. Currently, as our October 1 count was, we were at 114 students onsite, and it's broken down by grade level. Our next slide will show you how we've been able to increase our attendance by grade. Our preschool and elementary classes are almost operating at 100% enrollment on a daily basis. Our middle school is pretty close to that as well. Our high school does have some dips based on our student population at the high school, and there are psychiatric and emotional needs. However, at this point, I mean, we are working through and addressing most of the student population. Our chronic absenteeism, excluding suspensions, as of yesterday, was only 48.2%, which for us is huge. We averaged historically in the 60s and low 70s, so this year, at this point, as of yesterday, excluding suspensions, was at 48.2%. Our next slide, and that talked about our decrease in discipline, even with the increase in enrollment there. I think the opportunity to be spread out throughout the building has drastically decreased our suspensions and discipline issues. Our elementary students are isolated to the back area, where they don't have access and exposure to our upper-class students. They have their own entrance and exit, so they're really contained in the back and have access to all the other resources, but not necessarily exposure to our older kids. So that's been a huge addition here in the program. Our student intake process, ideally, we work with students pre-K through 12th grade. Ideally, most of our students come in through the PPT process and have been identified as having some level of serious psychiatric, social, emotional, mental, or behavioral needs, and we do service kids as young as four, and we have students through their 21st In the last year and a half, we've had the opportunity to partner with Yale and their social and emotional learning, so if you have a chance tonight and you have the opportunity to walk through the building, you will see some mood meters throughout the building in each of the classrooms, where they've established for their students to kind of come in and check in each day, as well as in the main office. You'll see like a staff mood meter in the main area, where staff can kind of come in and we're able to kind of regulate how people are feeling as the day goes on. You'll also have the opportunity to see meta-moments throughout the building, where teachers give students opportunities and different tools and skills to access if they're feeling frustrated, or if there's something going on, there's opportunities, and there's visual prompts as well as verbal prompts, as well as things available to each student sometimes on their desk. The program still is utilizing PBIS, as well as with the district. Our students here, our hopes are for them to score all the time, and that includes being safe, owning their, completing their tasks, owning their behavior, being respectful, and we do adhere to the district's electronic policy, so all of our students who come into the building through the front door, turn in their electronics in the morning, and they return at the end of the day, and we've had zero issues with that, so it's been a fantastic piece for our program. We also have access to, and the opportunity, as the years have gone on, to align ourselves with the district curriculum, so you will see our elementary students are using iReady and Wonders curriculum. Our middle school students have access to StudySync, and we are using Lexia throughout the building. Our high school students have access to the Ingenuity program, and we do use the Zink program, which is the high school equivalency for, oh my goodness, I'm losing my mind, but, like, I'm losing it. The Zink program, which is what the high school student is using. We have recently partnered with Waterbury Career Academy last year, and we give our students the opportunity, they send over their classes of students who are enrolled in the early childhood program, so the internship here. They spent the entire year with us last year, and they started again this past week. So Dr. Padua sends over about eight students a semester, they intern through our elementary program, and then work with our staff, as well as providing and aligning curriculum to the students in the building, so. We also are partnering with Workforce. Currently, as we all know, the program services students 16 and up. We have about 34 students who are eligible for this program. Currently, we have students aligning themselves into sites such as Sallis Bronson Library, Special Education Department, HR, our Office of Early Childhood, so we're placing them out. We are finding it a little bit of a struggle to find as many sites as we would like to find, however, we do have students out at those sites currently, so. And then, we talked about our program servicing that great population of students. We do keep an eye on where the trends are in our program, as to where students are coming from. At this point, what we're seeing is, while we do take students from the entire Waterbury community, a high influx of students are coming from the Driggs and Wallace neighborhoods. It's pretty equal at the high school level where they're feeding into us, but predominantly, our Driggs and Wallace community seems to have our highest enrolled students. We are taking, we do have students from out of district as well, who pay tuition to Waterbury from our neighboring schools, so historically, we average about three a year. Currently, we have one onsite, but that change, can change daily. And lastly, I mean, we've come a long way in our program, where we once were, to where we are now. We truly couldn't be there without the support of the Board of Education, our special ed department, our families, the community, and honestly, without the staff I have, I don't think we'd ever made it where we are. Our goal, obviously, is to continue our active engagement and partnership with Wellmore and the Department of Children and Families, and as I tease Joe regularly, my hope is to have an onsite health clinic sooner than later, as well as having psychiatric services and vocational and transitional services for our program. So that's really where our trajectory and planning is for the future.
Any questions? Any questions? First of all, I'd like to recognize your staff who are here, if you could please stand. Thank you for being with us tonight and for your outstanding work.
They're not going to stand. They're hiding over there.
And I don't know if there's any parents or students who have joined us this evening? Okay, thank you all very much. Parent, one parent, okay? Thank you for being with us this evening. Any questions from the commissioners? You mentioned your wish list at the end there.
I did.
Vocational, are there, so what, where do we stand with, in terms of a career path for these students?
So currently, we have some students who are accessing the career paths at their comprehensive high schools, so they come to us maybe in the morning, and they go off to their district schools in the afternoon, access extra curricular activities, academics, et cetera. Historically, a handful of kids through the years will go off to Nagatuck Valley, but most of our kids go off to the world of work, and so our hope really is to embed into the program some functional curriculum and life skills materials, because we do keep kids through their 21st birthday if necessary, and really giving them the skill set that they need to function in the real world. Interviewing skills, hands-on career experiences, navigating the community, opportunities to interview, and so with our PE teacher who's kind of taken over, Mr. Jermaine has taken over our workforce connection piece for us, we've really hoped to kind of embed that and give our kids the skill set to do those kind of things. Ideally, down the road, we'd like to get our home action room opened and give kids more culinary experiences. We do have a high interest of kids who are interested in woodshop, and automotive, and those type of things, and we do have the facility to do it, so our hope down the road is to get that up and going as well, to kind of give them more hands-on experiences.
Yeah, that's an important ingredient.
Huge.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Vice President Harvey?
Thank you.
Yes.
How are you?
How are you?
Good. Listen, something that's kind of perked my, my ears.
Yes.
Was when you mentioned, based on your data, that most of the kids are coming from, our students coming from Drake School and Wallace. Is that correct?
Drake's neighborhood, not necessarily from neighborhood.
Drake's neighborhood, okay.
So, a lot of the kids will filter from Drake's maybe to a BDLC, or to, from program in the district, and then may come to us, or may come directly to, from Drake's to us. But we always try to keep an eye on where our feeder schools are, so that if we need to look at resources through our sped department to kind of support them, that's always a huge piece. So if we see that there's an influx in a certain neighborhood, or a certain situation, we like to kind of have the supervisors and sped aware of that, so that they can provide the resources they need to in those sites.
So the same thing as with Wallace?
Mm-hmm.
The Wallace area, you say?
Mm-hmm, so the Wallace area.
Okay.
So not necessarily, is it Gil Martin that feeds into Wallace, or Wendell Cross would feed into Wallace? So not necessarily Gil Martin or Wendell Cross, because those, Gil Martin does have the middle school, so those are isolated and separate on that grid.
Yeah.
It was actually Wallace's neighborhood, so if you plot out the streets associated to Wallace exclusively.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. In your presentation, you mentioned the, the tech ed room, and it's, and you, you want to do that like next, in the future.
Yes.
Is, is it a staffing issue that you're?
Yes.
Problem is?
Yes. Yes. When we moved here, we moved the program to grow, and we grew the volume of students, but not necessarily all the staffing. So it's been a process. We've been able to include some special ed teachers to meet their enrollment piece, but the idea would be to add additional Unified Arts programs to the program to support the students in there.
Okay. So are we actively looking for?
Currently, I don't believe we have a position available here for that.
Okay. Is it a budgetary problem?
Possibly.
Possible. I'll take that as a yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You gonna come out of retirement?
I was just gonna ask you, would you like to come and teach it? I'm sure there's a, I'm sure there's some volunteer opportunities.
That would require him leaving the Board of Education, which I don't think he wants to do.
Well, he's a volunteer.
It's a volunteer year, right?
Yeah, you can come volunteer.
Charlie's got plenty of money.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public speaking. Is there anybody from the public who would care to speak this evening? Seeing none, could I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, excuse me, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if same motion carries. It will be in executive session for about five or 10 minutes.
Motion to return to the regular order of business, and all votes were taken.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So move, we're going to go a little out of order, and I would ask Chief Academic Officer Darren Schwartz to, we're on number 13. Assessment results. Yeah, Lindy, go do that, go ahead. Good evening. Before we start, do you want to introduce someone?
No, that's okay, Mr. Schwartz, you can stay right there. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Ms. Maria Burns, who will be the principal of State Street, and ask her, she has a few words to say in some of the changes that I've made across the district. I've made certain that principals have an opportunity to do a good transition plan, not a just immediate move. And so it is a pleasure to have Maria and Ms. Ariolo have an opportunity to collaborate. She will, both of them will be here as the transition occurs and as we continue to make some transitions across many positions across the district. So Ms. Burns, would you like to say something?
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin, and thank you. Good evening, commissioners.
Welcome.
Many of you know me and know some of my background experience here, and for those that do not, I have a strong background in special education from undergraduate and postgraduate work and a lot of roles here in the district in special education. So I'm very familiar with our alternative programs, particularly the State Street program, and am looking forward to working with the strong staff that is here at State Street and Mrs. Ariola Samoas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening, Superintendent Ruffin, President Brown, Vice President Harvey, and Commissioners. You have received in your, I believe, in an email from Mrs. Swain, the packet that includes the Smarter Balanced SAT and AP exam results. As you can see, it's a, it's a, it's a, about a 16-page report. My, my purpose tonight is to provide you some highlights from that report and to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the scores. I'll start with the achievement in general. We'll talk about achievement from grades three to eight as measured by the Smarter Balanced. This year, Waterbury Public Schools students earned the highest percentage of those meeting Level III or higher since the Smarter Balanced test began in the 2014-2015 school year. Waterbury also had the highest increase of students meeting or exceeding the achievement, the Level III achievement level or higher in our district reference group, and that would include Waterbury, Wyndham, Bridgeport, New Haven, Hartford, New London, and New Britain. The following subgroups earned their highest percentage of students meeting that achievement level of three or four since the Smarter Balanced began in 2014 in both ELA and math. Those subgroups would be special education, English learners, Black, Hispanic, white, and high-needs. The next portion of the packet focused in on growth, and as you recall, we've, we've given some several, we've given several presentations in the past about the Next Generation Accountability Index, where they not only look at students who are achieving a Level III or higher, but also students who are growing in, within the test and meeting certain bands. Growth is worth 400 points on the Next Generation Accountability Index, and achievement is worth 200 points. So we like to emphasize that even the state has recognized with a lot of feedback that the emphasis should be on growth, and thankfully, it's, it's worth 400 points. The good news for us tonight is that the, the district students are in the highest percentage of their annual target since the inception of growth being measured by the State Department in both ELA and math. Every grade and subject improved their average percentage of target achieved from last year. In terms of our subgroups, our Black, Hispanic, White, and High Need students all earned the highest percentage of target achieved in ELA over the last four years. In mathematics, special education, English learners, Black, Hispanic, and High Need students all earned their highest percentage of target achieved over the last four years. In addition, it's important to note that in our, in the state accountability indexed, the Waterbury Public Schools had the highest growth within the DIRG in ELA, and I want to make sure I get this right, and the highest growth in the DIRG for mathematics as well. And as of last year, in terms of growth percentage of target achieved, we led the DIRG in number. So it wasn't just the highest in growth, but we also led the DIRG in terms of overall growth percentage at 57.8. In mathematics, we also had the highest growth at 2.9% in, in the DIRG, and we were second in the DIRG in terms of overall growth percentage. When it comes to high schools, it's a, it's a little bit of a different story right now. We, although we had 36 students in the district receive AP Scholar Awards, which we're proud of, that is a reduction from 41 from the, from the previous year. In addition to high school, we have seen stagnant achievement on the SATs and mathematics, and we have also had a decrease in English Language Arts of 5.1% in the last four years. In the SATs and in the APs, we're seeing a decline, and not only in students taking the test, but also achieving those honors. In addition, as I mentioned before, we have seen that decrease in ELA while math, not only is stagnant, but it's also continues to be alarmingly low. I have more to say about the, the results. I'm sure you have a lot of questions regarding it, so I wanted to kind of give a general overview for commissioners and the public, and I'm happy to answer questions regarding the data.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I'm actually very discouraged. I took a look at, and I'll look at the pre-high school numbers, and I looked at it a little differently than it was portrayed to us. I didn't look at year by year, grade over grade. I took the opportunity to look back on how a particular population of students did year over year, as opposed to just grade over grade. And what I mean by that is although in, and I'll start with slide five, in grade four, grade three, we don't have any data to compare. However, in grade four, the one I could compare actually did well. The math grade year over year actually did better, and I'll, I'll set the, the tone of what I'm talking about. So if we look at slide five, and grade, grade four, 18 to 19, 2018 to 2019, if we go back a year and say, let's look at how grade four did when they were grade three. Okay, we did better by 0.6%, okay? However, once I started to look back after that, if we look at grade five on slide five, 18, 19, we did 21.7, which keep in mind, that means 80% did not meet or exceed the numbers that we're looking to achieve statewide. Okay, keep that in mind. So if you look at grade five, 18 to 19, 21.7, when they were fourth graders, they achieved at 25.6, and we went down by 4%. When they were third graders, they achieved at 26.6%. We went down almost 5%. It's nice that we put these charts, and in my world, these would not be green, they would be red. That's commentary. So if I continue on math, grade six, 18 to 19, 2018 to 2019, 15.2%. When they were fifth graders, it was 22.4. When they were fourth graders, it was 25.9. When they were third graders, 28%. That's a 13% decline from our current sixth graders to where, when they were third graders to where they are now. I can continue, and the one that I really want to bring out, because this trend goes through every grade, goes through every grade. I don't have what it means for the students who do go to middle school. I do think that has an effect as opposed to pre-K to eight, but I don't have that data. Our current grade eight students in math are at 11.8. If I go back to when they were fourth graders, per the data you gave me, they were 21.8%, meaning they have declined 10% from fourth grade to eighth grade. I'm not sure why we accept that.
We don't. That's why they're turnaround.
Well, we are accepting it.
No, we're not.
No, we're accepting that, because that's a data given to me. Now, if I go to ELA, is it as bad? No, not as bad. Percentages are smaller. They are smaller, but the trend is the same. And when they get to high school, it's even worse. So I, these are great charts that were given that show, and I'll hold them up, great charts that show equal to or plus. But what I just mentioned shows us failing. Now, again, you're not showing me what happens in middle school, and I know things happen in middle school. So I don't know what happens when, with the students that go to middle school vice pre-K to eight. I would be really interested to see that data, okay? To say, which many of us already feel, is that the middle school program is not where we want to be. And I'll give you at least that, okay? But the data that I'm comparing, and I'm just comparing the numbers given to me, do not project, and again, if in my world I showed these as green, when we're talking 20% vice 80%, I, I would be thrown out of the conference room. We can't show these as green. These are not green. These are red. These are red. And, Madam President, I thank you for bringing this ahead, because I don't have a full night in me tonight. As a Board of Ed Commissioner, I, I just can't accept these numbers. We're doing, at least by the numbers given to me, we're doing something wrong for ELA in math. So I'm not sure if, Darren, I'm not sure you have any answers for this, but we're doing something wrong. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I would just ask the superintendent, because the middle schools are now turnaround schools, so hopefully, there's an opportunity to do a deep dive and find out exactly what's going on and put an improvement plan. Maybe you could just mention what's going on.
Yes, I would gladly do that, and by no means are any of us satisfied with the way that the scores are, but we are reporting them green, not because they're green, we're reporting them green because it's just the color on the chart. It's not a, a chart like we sometimes see where it's green and yellow and red. We do that internally. But definitely, what I want to bring to everyone's attention is that we are not satisfied with this, but we also recognize, as the board did when, when you hired me, that for a number of years, that there had not been an investment in curriculum and instruction. And I think that that has been felt throughout the system for many, 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 many years. And we were able to bring some of that in last year, and we were able to bring a lot of it in this year. But in addition to just bringing it in, we have to make certain that it's implemented to fidelity. And so we are questioning a lot of the systems that we have. We're questioning a return on our investment as we've spent quite a bit on various resources to facilitate instruction on the individual campus area. We know for a fact that our pre-K eight schools, by the time students are in sixth grade, do perform higher than the sixth graders in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade schools. We also know that our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade schools are currently all turnaround, which means that they are writing extensive plans for how they're going to turn around a chronically low-performing school, because turnaround means chronic, means you've been there for a very long time. We recognize other obstacles. We, we recognize the fact that it has been very challenging to maintain math teachers within our district. That's, that's a huge gap. Some of our students have not had the consistency of having a math teacher for a full year. So we are going to the drawing board to look at what we could do to not only maintain our teachers, but to also develop them, because it's a critical shortage across America. We also recognize the same challenges with sciences. And we also recognize that while we have spent quite a bit of money towards some of those improvements, money is not the solution. It's people. And, and it's also teaching the standards. In Waterbury, while the standards for Connecticut were adopted in 2010, Waterbury did not move in that direction in 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. Now we're doing that. And what that means is if you don't have the resources that are at the level of complexity that you're expecting students to teach and learn, and the teachers don't have the resources that they need, then that means the students aren't getting what they need. And by the time you introduce what really needs to happen, it's a culture shock for everybody. And I would say that right now, the system has totally been shocked, because we are expecting that the level of instruction is going to be to the task of the standard, and it's very hard on everybody involved. Now, hard doesn't mean it's impossible, just means it's a challenge, and it is a challenge. And I think that we get there by supporting our teachers and staff to be able to deliver that instruction at a high level and recognize the fact that we have to use some of our Title I dollars, not just to have more programs, but to evaluate whether we're getting a return on our, on our investment. The three middle schools, while they are in turnaround, are currently working on an extensive plan. They've chosen their committees, which involve parents and stakeholders, and they've also met one time with the State Department, and they have met several times with their respective assistant superintendents, and we have a, a meeting that will be held jointly for the three middle schools that are in turnaround that will help us to develop a robust plan that will not just involve hiring more people, but really being strategic about the practices that occur within each one of those schools. So, no, we're not satisfied or pleased by, by any means, but we do have to recognize that there are some issues in the past that have contributed towards where we are, and we have addressed those, full-blown addressed them, because it is not acceptable to ask our teachers and our staff to do something without the resources that, in hand, and I'm very And I, I'm very pleased. The Board has been very supportive. And you've provided that. Now we have to make sure that we're implementing it. And implementing to fidelity doesn't mean that you implement it just when someone walks into the room. And that's what we're doing.
Okay, any other questions for Darren? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back to the agenda. Number three, Dr. Epperson. Request approval of a college facility. I'm sorry. Number two is Mr. Zuda. The enrollment. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to skip you.
I know you wanted to stick around. I get it. Good evening, Commissioners. Dr. Ruffin. The EDO six survey report in your packets has been submitted and certified to the State Department of Education. I would like to highlight some of the changes in the two thousand and nineteen report as a comparison to last year's report. Changes were minor. Overall enrollment, that was a decrease in student enrollment on the snapshot date of October first. We had, we were down fifty-five students, which is about three tenths of a percent. High schools had a decrease of thirty-three students, seven tenth of a percent. The middle schools had a decrease of six students, which is one tenth of a percent. And the elementary schools had a decrease of sixteen students, which is one tenth of a percent. From that date to today, we're back, we have, our enrollments up another thirty-six kids from that date. So enrollment fluctuates so much, so we're kind of, I would say, the change is negligent. And also in your summary packets, I gave you an eleven-year summary of our, our enrollment. And for historical purposes, the green represents the high schools. The red represents the middle schools, and the blue represents the K to five schools. Maybe you have any questions?
Any questions from Commissioners? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Thank you for the information. Dr. Epperson, request approval of a college facility request. Reservation agreement with Nogatuck Valley Community College.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dr. Ruffin and President Brown, Vice President Harvey, we are requesting approval of the usage of the facilities at Nogatuck Community College for two days, consecutive days, every month for a year, so we can have adequate spacing for our leadership development, professional development.
You know, I don't have it in front of me, but are we paying for this?
No, we're not paying for it. We just need to make sure that we're secured with the insurance on it from the district.
I'm just wondering if this is necessary to come before us? Is, is it a contract?
It's a contract, yes.
There's a hold harness. Okay, I was just curious because okay, all right.
All right.
Sounds great. Thank you. No, because there was a question from a Commissioner about contracts having to come before us. And I just, you know, I, I always thought that if it wa, if it didn't require a matching fund or funding, that, that didn't have to come before. But you're saying?
Where is that written? No, the contract language. We could get into a whole philosophical.
Yeah, no, no, I just yeah, and I, you know, I just wanted to raise that, yeah. Okay. All right, number four, Elaine Skoronsky, request approval of Amendment Two to the agreement with St. Vincent's Special Need Center, Inc. for education services to children with disabilities. Hi Elaine, how are you?
Good evening, Elaine Skoronsky from the Special Ed Department. We're requesting an amendment to increase the tuition amount for St. Vincent's for another student to be able to go there.
Any questions? And that's at the same conver, the same rate?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Okay, number five?
I believe five was removed from the agenda.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay. Okay, number five is removed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're going to six. Request approval of Title III Bilingual and Immigrant Children and Youth Education Grant Applications. Adele Ferguson. A new name now. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations on an amazing Hispanic heritage performance. That was just outstanding. You and all the students and the staff that put that together. It was amazing. Congratulations.
Okay, so I'm here to request permission to submit the grants for bilingual Title III and immigrant children and youth. The Title III grant is a grant for limited English proficient students. And we use the grant to provide additional educational materials for students in order to enhance existing language and academic content instruction programs. For our bilingual grant, it's specifically for bilingual students. And we, that is also utilized to provide additional staffing for our students. And the immigrant children and youth grant, it's our competitive grant. And it's used to support our students that are immigrant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Do we, do we have an idea of how many students we're serving in that program?
As of October thirty-first, we'd had two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight students.
Okay, that's a good portion. And that's, that's K through eight or throughout? Or does it?
Okay, um, from K through five, it's about a thousand six hundred and seventy-one students, middle school, six hundred total, and high school, six hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next is Linda Riddick Bearin, request approval of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one consolidated grant application. Good evening, Linda. How are you?
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Before you have the information on the consolidated grant, which is Title I, Title II, Adele did Title III, and I have Title IV. I'm not going to read over what you have in front of you. I just want to point out where there's a reduction in Title I. That reduction takes place in the fact that there's no longer no child left behind transportation, which was probably ten years ago. And we don't have any elementary schools that are turnaround schools, so we used to set aside money for those. So that's where the reduction. Fortunately, it worked out this year. And Title II-A, the reduction is taking place through the less PD money that's there, but it comes again in Title IV. So what was, Title II-A is a grant that will decrease every year. But Title IV is a grant that may increase or stay, maintain a certain level, so PD can be added to Title IV. Any questions?
So the overall bottom line has decreased a little bit, but you were able to, with other titles?
Yes.
Fill in the blanks, fill in the spaces, okay? Any questions on that? I, I had a question, maybe, Dr. Ruffin. In terms of the titles, how are we looking at those allocations in the context of our strategic planning?
Well, the strategic planning for two thousand and nineteen and beyond has not started. Happens after the vision mission and the committee starts to meet. Very closely, however, before any of that happens, we are looking at a return on our investment. So we've been investigating all of our different grants, not investigating, but we've been questioning every single item that we've purchased to determine the impact on student learning. And with that in mind, we've made some changes. You know, we've made some changes, and we're going to be making more changes when we look at all of the different structures in place. And I'm going to just give you an example. We found that some of our schools that are years ago may have been in a state of improvement, whether it was a turnaround or, or focused school. And there were several resources that were at the school. And even after they no longer became focused or turnaround, those resources remained at the school. At the same time, there were schools that didn't have those resources that did much better. So we, we ask ourselves, so what's the return on investment if with all of those resources, there wasn't significant gains or improvement? And what's happening at those schools that did better with no resources? What's happening there? And that's caused us to look at how we're spending Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title V, as well as Alliance and our general purpose budget. And so we're having those conversations, and we're really making some strategic decisions that really answer what's the impact. And, and so we're having those.
Okay. Every day, it sounds like. Any questions for Linda? Okay, thank you, Linda.
Thank you, welcome.
Next is Linda Francis, request approval of a professional service agreement with JC Vending and Distribution, LLC, to supply and deliver after-school snacks to various schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're requesting the approval of the contract for JC Vending with after-school snacks to provide snacks to the after-school program, the various schools throughout the city. Do, does anyone have any questions?
Has this gone up?
Yes.
And how many factors did we go to?
There's there was two. There's two responses. Thurston and
JC the lowest.
JC was lower on, on a lot of line items. But Thurston would not deliver to the individual locations.
Provide the service that we requested.
Did you have a question? Commissioner Hernandez and then Vice President, okay.
What kind of snacks are? What are we talking about?
So it's juice, every, every day it's juice, and then it's either Teddy Bear grams or some other type of bread item, like a graham cracker, teddy bear grams, muffin.
Okay.
They're all, they're all on the healthy.
Well, they're on the Connecticut Healthy Food Snack List.
So is it that little package thing that, that they received last year?
That's the supper program.
Yeah. So we have, that's different, correct.
It's different. Okay.
It's either a ju, it's a juice every day, and then some type of snack, whether it's a graham cracker or muffin.
Okay, correct. All right, I'm gonna let Commissioner Harvey. Vice President Harvey?
Thank you for asking the first question that I was gonna ask. The second question, however, is something, you know, it's, it's kind of related, but it isn't. What do you do with the snacks that are left over? What do we do with the food particularly that's, well, the snack, since we're talking about snacks, what do we do with the snacks that are left over?
These are all shelf-stable snacks, so
They're all what?
Shelf-stable snacks.
Okay.
So if it's not used on, let's, for example, if we use it on Monday, and it's not fully used, we will, we will recycle and use them up until they're used and not, and order less on the next run.
Got it.
For delivery.
So we use everything that we receive, you're saying?
Yes, yes. It's throughout the course of the program, yes.
Do we take inventory on that?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
And I apologize, I, maybe you could all introduce yourself.
I'm Sharon Shapen, accountant three.
Okay.
Mike O'Connor, Facilities Manager.
Mike O'Connor, okay. Linda, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you in and operating in your new facility?
We're in.
Almost.
We're in.
We're almost
Hopefully, by the end of the month, we'll have Phase One complete.
Well, we're, we're, we hope you'll invite us up to see your new digs.
Definitely will.
Let's have a meeting up there. I hear it's big.
Okay, we can have a meeting there, all right.
Thanks, Chuck, no problem.
You're gonna offer to be the chef, Chuck? I don't think we serve that. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Doreen Viola, quarterly expenditure report.
Madam President, Noreen is not in today. I do like to, to share that she has had a death in her family. Her mother-in-law passed away. Today was the viewing as well as the funeral services. So please keep Doreen and her family in thought and prayer.
Thank you. Okay. So we will have that at the next meeting then, I guess.
I think she's provided.
Oh, she provided us the information. I'm sorry, does anybody? So if you have any questions, I'm sure Doreen will be glad to answer them for you. Dr. Rodriguez, Alliance Grant Application.
Good evening, Madam President, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Superintendent Ruffin. I'm here today to request your permission to apply for the Alliance and Priority School District Grant. A quick overview of the changes based on the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. At that point, the allocation to the district was approximately twenty-two point five million. And we are seeking, in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, twenty-nine point four million dollars. So there's been an increase in the amount coming to the district. Some changes over last year. As you know, most of the budget goes into personal services and, and benefits. In this case, we, as Superintendent Ruffin mentioned earlier, we have put a big emphasis on investing in curriculum and instruction. We have marked in our budget two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a high school social studies curriculum, three hundred thousand dollars for a middle school math curriculum, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a fine arts curriculum update. We have also increased the amount of money going towards the online and credit recovery due to the enhanced graduation requirements. We have put in our budget two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for high school math and ELA curriculum. The springboard curriculum is a, one that is a recurring cost over time. There are consumables as part of that, that curriculum implementation that also provides ongoing professional development for our teachers in that area. Willbe is not designated as a Commissioners Network school, so we have put some money aside for the Willbe instructional learning environment. That means we want it to be an inviting campus, to have some more furniture and improvements in, in just the appearance of the, of the environment at Willbe. So we set aside a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that area. We also, with the addition of a CTE supervisor and the work with Portrait of a Graduate, really worked on setting aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design and implement high school career technical pathways for our students. We've also discovered a, an immense need as we go on in curriculum implementation to, more and more of the curriculum is provided through online interface, StudySync at the, at the middle school level. We have components for our elementaries that are, that all, that require student databases to be connected to class rosters, to our student information system, or Power School. So we have put in an educational technology specialist for that database integration, but also to ensure that all the investments that we've made in technology over the years play out in a teaching and learning situation where we have somebody who's guiding teachers in how to use that technology, so that we're not just making investments in the supplies, but we're also making investment in the human capital to make sure that that gets implemented. We include benefits, of course, for that position. We also have increased world languages curriculum. We are really pushing our students to become bilingual and belligerent. So a hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been put into our budget for increasing world language curriculum. And then, as I mentioned, Power School is, is where all our data resides. So to make improvements in our online regist, we want to make sure that we have an online registration process so that our data coming into the district is cleaner and has, is, is more reliable as we, as we do that. Instead of putting everything on paper in different forms, we want to increase Power School. So we've put in fifty thousand dollars there with the hopes of expanding it to providing 504 documentation, as well as a possibility in the future of having conversations around nurses storing some data in there. Of course, there's a whole bunch of vetting that we'll have to do before we get to that point, but it's in there. So that brings the investments in our curriculum instruction components to a hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, one point five nine million dollars. So almost one point six million dollars that is now directly going into enhancing our curriculum and instruction. So those are the high-level overview of the grant that we're asking permission to submit to the CSDE. With your approval, we will submit that and, of course, get feedback from the CSDE as to whether or not those are acceptable reform strategies in the Alliance grant framework. With that, open up for questions.
Commissioners, any questions? I had a question in terms of, and I know the Alliance and the turnaround and the different, but it's all impacting our students. And I hear a lot, and we, we have recognized, you know, we're trying to invest in social, emotional, trauma-informed practice. Mental health issues are, are big. Mental health issues are, are big in this district. Are we investing in any of those elements? Because it, we, we know the academic, but without the social, emotional, uh, we're gonna, I, I don't know if we're gonna be moving ahead as much as we want.
President Brown, I, I would agree wholeheartedly with that. Um, we do, I, I gave you the, the changes in the grant, but the Alliance grant does have built into it, uh, several personnel positions around SEL, including behavior technicians and, um, some other supports for students, as well as providing, um, PBIS and restorative practices, uh, updates in there. So there, that, that is built into the, into the Alliance grant.
And if you could get this information, for years, two of our schools have had a primary health grant from the state, where I think one, one is Duggan, I forget the other one at this point, but they've actually had an onsite program, uh, for mental health prevention. And I, I often wondered if that wasn't, uh, a model that should be duplicated. It's actually, they have staff, uh, it's kind of like a, a, a respite room where the, the students can go and get help if they're having a hard day or whatever. And it seems to be working in those schools. And given, given the number of our students with social, emotional needs, I'm, I really, I, I'd love to see how we can beef up that, uh, uh, you know, capacity throughout our school district.
Do you have the name of that grant?
It was the Primary Health Grant, I don't know, do you remember?
I thought it was Primary Mental Health.
Primary Mental Health.
Primary Mental Health.
It's in Duggan School, it's a state grant from, I believe it's from the, the State Department of Children and Families.
I think Louise Brown was the one.
Louise Brown, got it, but it's been, ever since I've been on the board for the past eight years, it's gone to those two schools, those same two schools.
Okay.
And I, I just, I'm curious as to, is it working? And, you know, as Dr. Ruffin said, we're evaluating all these things. So if it's a model that's working in the schools, maybe we should be expanding that model.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I believe it, it may be at Duggan and Wendell Cross.
Duggan and Wendell Cross. It's a primary, primary mental health.
That's what I recall, yeah.
Yeah, we, we will certainly review it, because both of the schools have high number of students that are being referred to other schools. So I would, I would question how, how effective it is.
That's what, you know, I think, and I think, um-
But, uh-
Go ahead.
We'll, we'll look at it.
Yeah, just as a model, and I think as, as we're really saying what's working, what's not working, because we really wanna make sure that the whole school environment is, our kids are safe, our teachers are safe, and we really have to get the capacity in there, uh, I think, for, uh, the social, emotional, which I know we've, I know we've been doing it, and I know Dr. Baker is into social, emotional, uh, but I, I just think we really have to understand that this is, this is foundational to a school, an urban school district. And I appreciate your, uh, thoughts on that.
Yes.
Any other, Commissioner Sweeney?
So I apologize, 'cause I'm still working through all of this.
It, it's 109 pages.
Yeah, I know it is.
Oh, we're getting a quiz afterwards.
Is there anything that was in here last grant period that is not in here? Did, did we look at something and say, it's not working, we're taking it out?
Because the funds have already been committed, IE salaries were already, and we talk a lot about return on investment.
Yeah.
Those have already been encumbered and are, in our budget, so, uh, even though we're in the middle of the year, we're currently paying some of these salaries out of last year, so we want it, we can't just pull the rug without making sure that we've got a plan in place to, uh, look at those programs. So, we've done a lot of continuation, but certainly with conversation with Cabinet, talking about what's the return on investment, what is our data telling us, are these programs still effective? If not, then we have to pla, have a year of planning to, uh, either jettison some of those programs or continue with, with those programs.
Okay. And bear with me while I get on my soapbox. But, the Alliance Grant is not a grant-
Right.
-in the, in the actual wording of a grant, what we know to be a grant. This is our ECS money.
It's ECS in, in another form.
This is our formula, or ECS formula money, and we have not had an increase in the general fund ECS side since 2013. Because every time, and there is an ECS formula increase, and if you're an Alliance district, that becomes your Alliance grant funds. So there are things here, I think, at this point in time, we all know that Waterbury Career Academy is a success. It is, it's a success, and it is, it has added to the overall success of the district. The state has no plans for returning those funds to your ECS monies. And I go through this every year with our, um, state delegation, we'll go over it again with them. But there is no plan to get you out of Alliance. The state never wrote that. Um, so when I look at things like the Waterbury Career Academy positions, I know that we had to put them in the Alliance grant, because the Alliance grant hit the year that-
It was opening.
-they created Alliance. So, we didn't have the expected ECS increase that was gonna fund the, um, Career Academy, because they took it and they put it in Alliance. So, that was the reasoning behind doing those kind of things. But when we see that we have something that's, is a sus, a sus, a success, such as Career Academy, then we need to really start pounding on our state legislators and state delegation to do something about this, because that money needs to return to ECS, so that we have some flexibility on how we fund those positions.
Right, in my, in my quick study of the Alliance grant, it's intended to really drive innovation and improvement, and as you said, Career Academy ha- has shown some success, so that, that should be institutionalized and we should-
And not be, right.
-see the money, again, realized in innovation and improvement.
Yeah, and if you, we're talking here about over $4 million for Career Academy. If we move that back to our general fund monies and had some flexibility, we might not, we might even be able to not only fund Waterbury Career Academy, but stretch some of those funds so that we could do some of those things, replicate them in our, our other high school. The state is really strangling us here, and we've really gotta speak, start speaking loud, and that's the end of my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, part, part of my, um, well, it's just a thought, it probably has nothing to do with why you're here, but I'm gonna ask you anyway, and I probably should, it's a question for Darren. We've just, uh, you know, identified a wonderful curriculum for preschool, creative curriculum, that's really, uh, observation exploratory, I'm very excited about it. I'm just wondering if we could take a look at kindergarten? 'Cause if you look at the kindergarten, um, inventory, which is the only assessment, and it's pretty subjective as the teachers look at the children, I'm just wondering, you know, is that curriculum in kindergarten appropriate for the child development, uh, level of those kids? Because when I looked at the, my, and I'm not a curriculum specialist, but it didn't seem that it was based on exploratory anymore, it was just, they're sitting in seats, they're not playing as much, they're not exploring. It seems like they went from this very creative environment, and they're going into a very structured environment without the time to really, you know, segue into it. And I'm just wondering if we could look at that? And, because that's where we're seeing a lot of the behavior in the kindergarten. You know, the kindergarten students are coming in, and I think it's a lot to do with the curriculum, to tell you the truth, and what's happening in those classrooms. So, if we could take a look at that, the transition to kindergarten, 'cause I think it, we need to help our teachers really look at the students and not say, oh, I have to do this curriculum, and the kids are not ready for it. So, if you could look at that.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is, uh, Mr. Clark. Request approval of an agreement with Dude Solutions for Facility Management Software.
Good evening again. This is an item that we, uh, went out to bid on, and I've been working with our Facilities Department, um, and our IT Department, as well as our permitting group, um, to look at streamlining and, uh, upgrading the sort of technology associated with how we track work orders and whatnot. Currently, there are a number of different ways we do it, um, largely, uh, based on the department itself, um, some with some technical assistance of a vendor, but mostly it's internal spreadsheets and a heck of a lot of paper. Um, so, uh, this is, um, a solution, uh, that makes it paperless, uh, allows for work orders to, uh, be tracked, and we could run reports out of it, budget, capital, projections, et cetera. Uh, but more importantly, it does allow some access, so we can grant, uh, principals, maintainers in the buildings and so forth, so they could view it, see the progress on work orders, so we don't have to go through the phone trees and who didn't do what, it'll be right there, you could see it was done or not done, and we'll certainly be responsible for what was not done. But we can sort of get some, separate fact from fiction. Um, I've used this, uh, particular solution in New Haven, uh, for a number of years to, uh, great success in both my budget planning and just day-to-day operations and holding contractors and vendors accountable to what they're supposed to do, uh, as well as our, our staff. We should be able to flip it, uh, to use for both IT and facilities, and perhaps also our permitting, uh, again, to make it paperless, people could do online kind of requests and so forth. Um, so this, the cost, um, represents, uh, the, um, low bid of the most qualified applicants that did all the things we wanted, and with the ordinance, we were able to actually negotiate even a lower price, um, uh, after that. Uh, we wanted to put some money together, make sure we're into the budget year, and we still had the money available to do it. Um, so that's why we're coming now, as opposed to earlier in the year when we had finished the, um, selection process. But we'd like to move ahead, I think that'll allow us to probably get going for the calendar year, get some of the kinks out, and, uh, you know, roll it out in the spring to the principals and other staff.
Any questions? Commissioner Fergano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In my old career, I was always enlightened, every time I saw a new software product to learn, behind it, there's also hardware to support it. Does this include any additional incremental hardware that's needed on the IT side? Or is it sitting in a cloud somewhere?
Uh, it, it's largely cloud-based, but the, the price is inclusive of the upgrades.
So it's not just software, it's also-
Correct.
-hard work platform included?
Right, yeah, and, but the, the pricing does include the automatic upgrades, sometimes, as you well know, some of those companies will hit you with, you've gotta pay for the upgrades, the day after you bought the product. That's included in this.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Schwartz, our Starbase program.
Captain Kirk?
Captain Kirk.
This one goes differently. So, uh, this is a, uh, good evening again. This is a, uh, program acknowledgement that the, um, Board recognizes that Starbase is occurring within the district, it's mandatory, get the program acknowledgement for, um, uh, for the Department of Defense, and so we're here tonight to get that official program acknowledgement. One thing about Starbase, obviously, our students do get to go on a five-day, um, excursion to NVCC. Um, we are looking to do a more thorough audit of that program, and to look at specific outcomes that students do get out, um, of that five-day experience, to ensure that those five days being pulled out of the classroom, um, although, for, great for Starbase, we wanna make sure exactly what we're, our return on investment is for that. But for tonight, um, this is the program acknowledgement for the current school year.
Any que, Sabrina, did you go to that program, the Starbase program? NVCC, no? Have you been in, were you, how long have you been in the school district?
Um, I've been here since 13.
How come she didn't go?
You want me to answer why she didn't get, why she didn't go?
No, I was just wondering, I thought every fifth grader in the district went to the program.
No, that's, so, so part of the, um, so, NVCC, they go for five days. So we have about 80 fifth-grade classrooms. So it's about four, that'd be 400 days of, of, of every student going, so unfortunately-
I didn't realize that, I thought every fifth grade got to go.
No, so, that's part of the, uh, the look at the return on the investment also, is that, unfortunately, what happens in a school, it's just, say, like Chase, that may have four or five fifth grades, um, one class, sometimes two classes gets to go, but then there's three classes that don't.
Well, that's inequitable.
Yeah, so, so right now, that, that is how they currently, and it's more of a time thing, uh, and so, uh, that is, that is a discussion to be had with Starbase, and maybe fewer days, a robust few days with more kids. Exactly.
Okay. I didn't realize that. For some reason, I thought every fifth grader got to go. You didn't get to go, oh.
Now you're making her feel bad.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, we did 13, uh, 14 is just, uh, the Board of Education meeting, any questions on that? The schedule? 15, use of school facilities by school organizations. 16, uh, Committee on Building and School Facilities. 17, superintendent's update to the board. Oh, Commissioner Stango, yeah?
Just have a quick question on, on one of the items here. Um, I'm looking at the, um, the Extended School Hours Program for, um, our schools, and, um, I, I don't know a heck of a lot about it. I'm wondering if we, sometime we can have a presentation, like, when did it start? And how many students are involved? Um, how many teachers are, I know the teachers are involved.
This is the, a lot of this is that 21st century after-school grant, but I'd be glad to get a fuller report about it, yeah. And we've had this grant for many years now. But I, I'll get it.
Have we been able to quantify our return on that investment?
Uh, we have had reports about, uh, outcomes, but probably not as detailed as, as we're moving towards, so we'll have to have a report on the after-school program. Good question, okay.
But I don't think that's-
Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't think so, it is.
Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, very briefly, and I know I've been asked some questions about the GARRUP grant, and I, I just wanna be clear that up until, well, never, the position does not reside in Waterbury Public Schools. Uh, it, it hasn't resided in, in Waterbury. It is something that was funded through Nagatuck Valley. So, the position resides with them. Now, in previous districts that I've worked, there was always a district person, because as a district, we always wanted to know the impact on GARRUP on our students. But that is not the current structure in Waterbury. Um, I will have some conversations with Nagatuck Valley, but that, we were not a part of the grant, we did not write the grant. Um, we are listed as one of the school districts that are recipients of the money for the grant, but we were not at the table when that grant was written. So I'm not able to provide to you any information relative to our students, because it hasn't really resided within our district.
Is there any negative opportunity costs that we're thinking about there by not being in the driver's seat along with Nagatuck Valley?
In order for it to work successfully, my experience is that it has to be a joint effort.
Charles?
I recall that when the, uh, grant first came to us, um, we're talking, I don't know, what is it, six years ago or more?
Because this was the first year. Yeah, it's, yeah, actually, seven years, seven years, 'cause it started with the sixth grader, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, okay, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, so seven years ago.
Then you go to high school, and, yeah, well, my point is, we would periodically have a, uh, an agenda item on, for workshop, and it was presented, probably by Nagatuck Valley.
Dave used to come.
They, they saw him.
Right, but we'd also have our own people who were in the schools.
Right.
Um, maybe it was all Nagatuck Valley who signed the person to the school.
Yes.
But we'd get a report on it.
Yep.
Uh, we'd get a report of how many students were in. Um, I'm, I'm interested in knowing the biggest, uh, benefit of that program, seemingly, would be they were going to be able to go to Nagatuck Valley or Western or Southern, free tuition, if they qualified, and I'm wondering how many did that? I know now we're starting a new grant, so it's gonna be a new cohort.
There, there actually was a, a, a press release, and, uh, it's on the, it's on our website, actually, and if I recall, over, over a thousand students ben, benefited from that grant. But we'll get the, I, if we ask-
We talked about a thousand students who were a part of the GARRUP program.
Part of GARRUP, yes, yes.
Right.
But I think maybe we, I mean, in order to get the new grant, they probably, wouldn't they have to give information about the old grant?
I hope so.
Uh, so, we, we could probably get some information from them.
I will continue to, to search, but-
Darren, still here?
Yes, the staff-
Darren, you work with Dave a lot.
Still here. But, up until today, at this moment in time, I have not been able to acquire any information that will answer our questions about the impact of GARRUP based on our own data or a person that has that data in our district. I've asked, um, certainly I've had conversations with my department, but, and I wanna give us, I wanna know. I also wanna know how we're gonna- I also want to know how we're gonna select the students, are students selected? I read in a letter that it will involve our sixth and seventh graders. The other two districts, it will involve their seventh graders in moving up. It would be very beneficial if I knew the impact and how many of our students and any standing records. But when I say to you today, I have not been able to find that. I'm telling you the truth. I have not been able to find any information from Waterbury Public Schools and its relationship to this GEAR Up grant.
I know the grant, when it started, was the sixth grades, and it was, and I shot you an email about this. It was only the three comprehensive middle schools, and it was at the sixth grade level, and they had to stay in the program through high school. We fought for our pre-K eights, and they did come up with some additional resources, not money. They were not eligible for the scholarship, for the, for their free tuition, but they did give them some additional resources to work with those kids on a similar basis. But not the same deal, which is why, when it came out, it's a great, but let's not forget that we have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in our pre-K through eights, and that needs to be addressed as well. Charles is right. In the beginning, we did get regular updates. They, it did track student performance and how the kids who applied and were in GEAR Up fared against the kids who didn't go in GEAR Up. We had those early on, but I haven't had, I haven't heard a report in years.
This past year, we didn't know, yeah.
Yeah, we got nothing.
All right. So we'll try to get that information as we move forward, because I think you're right. We should not have people in our school district that we're not be able to work with and get that accountability system. I would imagine each school that they have an assigned person, there should be a relationship with that principal. Because they had space in all of our schools, so, all right. So stay tuned, we really need to get that information. Thanks for raising that, Charles, okay? Any other things people are interested? Okay, Dr. Ruffin, any comments? Okay, could I have a motion?
No motion.
No motion?
No motion.
We are adjourned.
We're just done.
Thank you. No motion, we're done.